So, I see some familiar and some unfamiliar places in the audience tonight, but I see some young faces in the back. So, I just want to ask, are any of you in the back here for participation in government?
Yeah.
Pretty observant. So, this is our regular monthly meeting for you guys. And we're going to do something that we don't always do, but on a regular basis, we honor members of the community who have really gone above and beyond what you would expect from a normal member of the community. So, tonight, we're going to do an honor for Lou Bermoster, who is president?
I'm the chairman of the board.
Chairman of the board, refers National Bank of Scotia. I'm going to say a few words about him. We'll do the honor, and then we'll go back to our regular agenda. So, Lou, if I can meet you right over here. Close the door so the background moves a little bit better. You would stand right here. You left, sorry. So, I always say this when we do a little honor somebody. If you don't know me, I'm Chris Gassper, I'm the mayor. This is something that the board trustees and I do every once in a while for an outstanding citizen of our community. It's also something that doesn't last long, and it's something that only happens once. So, if you're a family member that wants to get a picture of this, or you want to be close enough so that you can see, please feel free to move anywhere so that you can see better or take the picture better, because once it's done, it's done. You don't get a second chance to take the picture or anything else. You're welcome to get up and move and do your thing. Like I say, I want this to be as special as possible, and it's going to be recorded. It has to be recorded. So, I don't know when the last time I met Lou was, or the first time I met Lou. I think it was when I became a member of the Scotia Relief Association, and Lou was on the board of directors for that. I didn't know him at all. I knew who he was, a lot of respect came with that job. But Lou always came to the meetings with something to add, and he was a big part of Scotia Relief for a long, long time. Next time I met him was when I got to be elected as a trustee to the Village of Scotia. And at that point in time, we were having a little thing I'm going to call the District Four Wars. Lou was a huge part of that. And from then on, being involved in politics, obviously, First National Bank, but Lou as the spearhead of that, has just been involved with the village in so many things, I can't even tell them. So, you know, I consider myself a person that does public service, a lot of public service. I just want to go through Lou's a little bit.
Unfortunately, the only one that kept really track of what I was doing was my daughter. And she's out of town.
She gave him this list.
And I think this is where it came from. So, I'm not going to read everything Lou did, but, you know, my entire life has been spent for myself, working for my community as a teacher and as a politician. I've been involved with some other committees. I thought I had started to develop myself a pretty good resume, and I took a look at Lou's. Lou's resume starts the year I graduated high school. And it actually starts before that, because he graduated high school the year I was born. So, I've got a lot of catching up to do. There's no way I'm going to do the things Lou has done locally and area-wide, as far as your contributions to our community. So, I consider you a great, great man, and I actually consider you a model for what I would like to be when I get to the point where I'm going away from politics and relaxed, kicking back.
You'll enjoy it, because I enjoy everything I've done all these years.
So, Lou, what we're going to do tonight is we're going to name you a patron of the village. It's the highest honor that we can give a member of our community. And to do that, I've got a proclamation. I'm going to read it. It says, "A proclamation to honor Louis H. Bermoster. Whereas Louis H. Bermoster has lived and worked in the Scotia Glenville area his entire life, establishing himself as a leader in our community; and whereas Lou Bermoster has worked to provoke the business interests of the Village of Scotia through his involvement and leadership in the Scotia Business Improvement District and the Metroplex Development Authority; and whereas Lou Bermoster has further served the village as a fire commissioner representing Fire District Four, and in that role advocated for the quality and importance of the Scotia Fire Department; and whereas Lou Bermoster has exemplified the motto 'Service Above Self' through his long involvement in Scotia Rotary, the Scotia Relief Association, and his support of the Scotia Festival Events Committee, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and board of trustees recognize Louis H. Bermoster for his outstanding dedication and exemplary service to our community, and hereby proclaiming him a patron of the Village of Scotia." Congratulations. Thank you. Lou, I think you're one of only nine people right now that wear this pin as a patron of the Village of Scotia. I'm going to let you pin it on at your leisure, because I know I'll drop it if I try to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, my wife Judy is the reason that I'm able to do all these things that you say that I've done. So, my wife is Judy Bermoster, she's here. I met her up at Galway Lake years and years ago. We used to spend our summers up there, and we have between us six children, four of which are that I raised here in Scotia, and two that were raised in Washington. So, we have a great Glenville family, and we have a wonderful life right now in the village. I'd like to thank everybody who was here, and the bulk of you people are really my friends at the bank, and they're friends for a long, long time. Any project that I've been involved in, there was always some help that came from not only my family, but also the friends in the bank over many years. So, I'd like to thank them for making this all possible. And I think you'll find many of them are already involved in a lot of activities around the village. Everything that I've done in the village, in the end result, I always enjoyed it, because you always learn, even if you don't succeed, from your experience. So, I've had a lot of things that didn't go, but the things that I've learned when I've had failures have helped me go on through. At my age, you have a lot of failures. Historically speaking, my grandfather started the business, a feed business, up on Sackadog Road, coal. And when my dad got involved in it, that'll be a five dollar fine. Just to make it short, my dad ended up taking over the coal and oil business, and I ran that, not for 15, 20 years also. But my grandfather was also the second president of the bank. My father was the third, and I was the fourth, and my fifth, rather, and my son John is the sixth right now. I still work full-time. I give my people a hard time all the time, but I'm accessible. So, it is... I like to talk, tell stories, and my wife won't really let me tell them, but a lot of them involve the village. And a lot of them are related to two people who probably, I think, should have received the award more than I do, and that's Dave Montana and Rod Rolich. We were together in Rotary and business and friendship and all the way from grade school on up. So, Rod Rolich is still around town. He comes back for the summer. And Dave Montana has a place at Lake George, but he's down here every time he's here every week, and he works us at the bank also. Far as stories go, I'll just tell you one short story. Does anybody remember when we had fun with outhouses? We put them in front of the bank and the fleece sheet and on top of buildings and in front of people's houses. This was an old outhouse that was at a camp up at Galway Lake, and we painted it red, white, and blue for the bicentennial. And one night, we decided that we'd like to have some fun with it. So, we took it down and put it in front of the chief of police's house in the town of Glenville. The next thing I know, the thing's moving around for about two weeks, ending up on everybody's property. But all of a sudden, I heard a rumor that it was going to be placed in front of the bank. So, and they said they were going to do it at some night. I forget when it was. So, my brother and I got a flatbed truck with a tailgate on it. We parked up on James Street and watched the guys come down, put it in front of the bank, laughing like crazy. And guys from the fire department were on the bench outside watching this whole thing going on. And they're laughing like crazy to themselves. They took off and went down Mohawk Avenue. Brother and I came around the corner with a truck, pulled up, put the outhouse on back of the truck, and took off. Meantime, these guys were going around the block to come back and watch to see what the reaction was. And they got up here, and there was no outhouse. But that's not the end of the story. And my brother and I were going up to Crosstown, and all of a sudden, we saw flashing red lights behind us. So, I figured I'd hurry up and get off at the Brandywine exit, and all of a sudden, my brother says, "You better stop." The outhouse went right up in the air, fell right in the middle of the cross... And it turned out it was an ambulance. It was not that. So, we picked it up, and the outhouse actually belonged to a guy by the name of Al Irwin, who had a Mohawk... Pardon me, had an Esso or Humboldt mobile station on Erie Boulevard and also one up in this unit. So, we took it up to his house, and we set it on his front lawn. Son of a gun, we didn't have a camera with us. So, we got up at 6 o'clock and came back up, and the outhouse was gone. Completely gone. We never found out what happened to that outhouse until after Al had died. He got a stroke. And we tried to get it out of him. Every time we were with him, he would never tell us what happened. Well, it turns out that he and his wife got up, and they saw us dump it off, and went out with a hacksaw, with an axe and saws, and broke it all up into firewood side. And they had a house in back of them... In back of their house, they had a woodpile. And they took the woodpile down, put the outhouse pieces underneath there, and then stacked it back up. Well, the reason why he never told us where it was or anything else was because his neighbor, and he had a property dispute, and it turned out that the woodpile was in a neighbor's property. Some of you old timers will remember Davis Edkins, OTB fame. Well, Al wasn't going to mess with Davis Edkins. So, the end result was at his funeral service, we found out actually what happened, but we all had a good laugh.
My wife just cut me off. Thank you. I think they must be doing something right at First National, because both Lou and Jack Collins from First National are two of the patrons of our village. So, you've got to be doing something right over there. So, thank you for coming tonight. At this point, we're going to take a five-minute recess for those who would like to leave. If you'd like to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're perfectly welcome, but you can receive for five minutes. And for the guyship for Pig, when certain things come up, I'll just explain to you what they are. So, the next thing on our agenda is privilege of the floor. Privilege of the floor is when anyone from the community who wishes to can address the board of trustees on any matter regarding the village. So, at this point, I'm going to open privilege of the floor. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard? A privilege of the floor. Seeing now, close it. And move on to item number five, which is to authorize me to sign the renewal for our MVP healthcare effective June 1st, 2018. This is regular healthcare that we provide employees. So, annual renewal. Unfortunately, this year, the increase was 12%. Any discussion? All payers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we met with our reps from MVP today just to discuss, you know, the plan and what options there were and what the increase in our rate was. And they also brought the renewal for our MetLife, which is our dental plan. That's 0%. So, there's no increase in that. So, could I be authorized to sign the renewal for that as well?
I'll make motion.
All second. Any discussion? All payers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number six is to appoint Roger Pugh to the Village of Scotia Town and Level Joint Municipal Survey Committee to fill a vacancy.
I'll make a motion for a second.
Any discussion? All payers say aye? Aye. Any opposed? And Roger did attend the last meeting of the committee to knew he was going to be appointed. Item number seven is a resolution... Oh, excuse me. Item number seven, I'm going to can't dable. After reading the resolution that established the committee, there is nothing about residency at all in the establishment of the membership. So, we're free to appoint anybody we want. So, we'll table the item number seven. Item number eight is a resolution to adopt the Think Differently Initiative to assist individuals with special needs and their families. So, this is an initiative that comes from state legislator Mary Beth Walsh. She's very interested in, and she had called me initially about the initiative, as well as asking if Scotia Cinema might sponsor a movie day for youth with Tourette's or on the autism spectrum, so that they could enjoy a movie with some of the effects and not have to worry about, you know, the public's reaction to that. So, Rich from Scotia Cinema is working with her on establishing that and bringing the kids in for a day. And I'm just going to quickly read this resolution, and we'll look for adoption and her support. Resolution wears... Says, "Whereas Think Differently Initiative is about promoting awareness and acceptance of all people and advocating for the inclusion of all individuals living on the autism spectrum and with special needs; and whereas our state and communities are stronger because of our diversity and differences; and whereas according to the Centre for Disease Control, over 55 million people, or approximately 19% of Americans, have a type of disability or special need; and whereas for some people with special needs, the very things that make them unique can also keep them on the sidelines, separate from those who might not understand their differences or uniqueness; and whereas it is important to promote and provide guidance to those with special needs on how to access publicly-supported services available to them in the community; and whereas it is important to encourage and educate the community and businesses on ways they can make facilities and services more accessible and on how to train staff to welcome and to support special needs customers and coworkers; and whereas the goal of this initiative is to provide and support an inclusive environment for individuals of all abilities by supporting community events that expand family-friendly opportunities for people with special needs and their families; and whereas adopting the Think Differently Initiative is an important statement that our village officials, business owners, and residents can make to show their support for the differently-abled children and adults with special needs in their family, now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Scotia, residents, and business owners adopt the Think Differently Initiative so that all are better prepared to communicate with, provide for, and support those living on the autism spectrum and with special needs." Nobody care to adopt that? I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All payers say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Sorry.
You're too fast for me. I'm not very supportive of individuals with special needs. I don't feel comfortable with passing resolutions that don't do much and are outside our purview. I'd rather abstain.
Anything else on that, since I cut the discussion short? We'll move on to item number nine. So, item number nine calls for a resolution to adopt certain parcels of land from Schenectady County. However, we haven't come to an agreement with the county on that yet, so I don't want a resolution. I just want consensus. So, there were three parcels the county asked us if we'd be willing to take over. One is the retention ponds up in Stone Ridge, which are fenced in. We maintain them. It's everything... We do everything but own them. The second is the corner to the neighborhood up there, and it's got a stone thing that says Stone Ridge, and we maintain that. I forget, the third one we're going to take is...
Well, then they offer...
We're going to just take the two and not the other?
Correct.
And the third one that we declined to accept is part of the drainage system. It goes behind people's properties. It's not accessible by the road, and it's all grown up. Some people have put sheds and stuff on it, and we're just declining to take ownership of that. So, the two that are important for us for operations and everything else, we want to make deals. Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
And I think it's crucially important, especially the retention ponds, that we continue to own those, because the other option is the county auctions it to somebody, and we don't own the retention ponds that we need for our drainage system. So, okay. So, Lydia will continue to work on an agreement with them for that. Item number 10 is mayor's cottage to the board. With Lou here, we talked about Fire District Four. So, our contract with Fire District Four expires December 31st of this year. Unfortunately, that's halfway through our fiscal year, so as we're putting the budget together, it would be who the village to have an extension of that contract, so we know what our revenues will be for the following year. I mean, absolute worst-case scenario would be that the town decides they're not going to use Scotia for this contract somewhere else. I don't see that happening, but it would be nice to know what our revenues are going to be. So, I contacted the supervisor. My proposal is to roll the contract over. We've done this before, under the same terms as it is now. So, I contacted him once, went to Florida, been here for four weeks. I took the contract itself and then made the revisions in the numbers at the 2% that the contract is right now, sent those for his review, and he said, "Give him a little while to look at it, and he'll get back to me." So, hopefully, we'll have something in our pockets, so that we just know where our future I've got Lydia looking right now at our contract with the city of Schenectady for sewer. You may have read the paper that across the river in the Stockade area, they're going to build a brand-new sewer pump station. Currently, when we pump across the river, we do not go to the sewer pump station. The proposal is that when that new one is built, that our pipe go into that pump station. It's a slippery slope for us, because we're responsible for 10% of any improvements made on their system that we send our effluent through. If we get to... If they somehow say now that we're going to be responsible for 10% of that new building that we're building, it's going to be problematic. So, we entered that contract without our effluent going through that building. I'm hoping that Lydia can find a way to say, "Hey, you know, we didn't contract for this, and we're not liable for that." Several of us met with representatives from Smartlot, so that's the company that's doing our LED streetlight conversion over. They're going to be starting their survey soon. It looks like the national grid is going to get its new tariff, and with a new tariff, it looks like the buyback is going to be even more beneficial for us than what we had expected. And there's some other things too, you know, minutia things that make the whole thing look pretty good. It looks like the actual replacement won't start until the beginning of next year, the beginning of 2019, but we'll have for a couple of days trucks going around doing lumen checks and counting lights and that sort of thing. So, when they start that, I'll send a mass email out to our residents to know what's going on. I applied to CDTc. I might have told you guys about this already, I'm not sure. I applied to CDTc for a workshop to develop a complete streets policy for the village. We've had a couple stops and starts in trying to do that, and we all know the importance of having that in place. So, this workshop is fully funded by CDTc. They send a person with the knowledge of how to develop a policy. Saturday workshop would be held right here. I've asked members of the bid to attend, planning board, board of trustees, traffic safety committee, get everybody on board, and get us in position to have that policy in place. We may have before us a proposal for the Citco Station across the street from high school. So, they have a proposal before the planning board to put a second island in on that grassy point that has a diesel pump, as well as moving the propane tank away from the... Right next to Dairy Circus and moving it on the other side of the building.
Well, if the diesel pump is like... They're pumps. It's... Gas pumps is what they're really doing.
Okay. So, the plan... So, that will require, since it's new pumps, it will require a special use permit from us. I'm holding fast to our protocol of not considering a special use permit till we have a final site plan approval, et cetera, et cetera. In order to expedite this, the planning board may be holding a special meeting to try to get them a final approval. If that happens before our meeting next Monday, then I would propose that we look at the special use permit then to allow the project to go forward. I want to draw your attention to the artwork that's decorating Village Hall. So, I think two or three times a year, the school district hands out artwork from the students from all of the Scotia Glenville schools. So, we appreciate that. There's some up here, and there's also some downstairs. I distributed you guys a list that Jim had made up of improvements to Collins Park that will be funded through the $155,000 that the county is giving us for those improvements. They're being very cooperative with us in that this $155,000, if you want to go super technical, we need to put a dollar amount for every single step for everything we do. After talking with the county, they don't feel that's necessary, and they're going to trust us to do the projects that are on the list. You see, the list does not add up to $155,000, because there's an extra $4,500 or so for engineering costs that would be associated with those projects to some. So, as soon as they can get paperwork underway, we'll have that money in place. And then finally, I may have already mentioned this to you as well, but the Scotia Glenville Memorial Day Parade Committee is in desperate need of new members. Their membership has dwindled. Cory Lovato has done an excellent job for the last three, four years, moved out of the area, so she won't be doing it, and it's just not the huge backbone, just because nobody left to put the whole thing together. So, I met with him twice. Maria and I are meeting with him tomorrow at 1:00, just to see what we can put together as far as a committee to get this thing to happen. But if you guys know anybody who's looking to get involved in the village, it would be a great place to get some volunteers. And those are my comments. Item number 12, departmental reports. Item number 11 correspondingly is on the special committee report. Sorry, Tracy Matthews.
Nothing to report.
Tracy Gifford.
We had a planning board meeting that you talked about. Our department meeting was postponed last week because it's snowing, and it's starting about now.
Tracy Tiberio. Nothing to report. Tracy Rizzo.
We have a small meeting. I didn't intend it, but I talked to John Povani on it, that we're putting together the car show for this year, and we're just starting to put things together and get things organized and move ahead on it.
Item number 12, departmental reports. Any questions or comments on the departmental reports? Any care to move to accept them?
I'll second.
All payers say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Just for you guys, the Pig students, the departmental reports, these are the people in front of here, head of a department, police, fire, parks, and public works. And so, the trustees know what is going on and what's been happening in each department. On a monthly basis, they supply a report to the trustees. Item 13 is our claims. Our claims is where we pay our bills for the month.
I can make motion to have those.
I'll second my motion.
Any discussion on that? Please call it a roll.
Tracy Matthews.
Yes.
Tracy Gifford.
Yes.
Tracy Rizzo.
Yes. Yes. Item 14, approval of the minutes of the February 14th special meeting of the board of trustees.
I'll make motion for a second.
Any discussion? All payers say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Item 15 is approval of the February 14th regular meeting of the trustees.
I'll make motion for a second.
Any discussion on that? All payers say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Item 16 is approval of the minutes of the February 20th meeting of the trustees.
I'll make motion for a second.
Any discussion? All payers say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Item 17 is the approval of the March 6th special meeting of the board of trustees.
I'll make motion for a second.
Any discussion?
It is an awkwardness at the end with Berber adjourning to executive session, is I think is the word I'm saying.
How does it read?
I don't have it in front of me.
It discusses a particular person?
No. No, it doesn't say discuss. It's executive session to a particular person.
So, I'll move that we accept the amended minutes. Ready for a second?
I'll second.
All payers say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'll second. I don't mean you to want stuff. I'm looking out for it.
Item 18 is new business. Anybody have any new business, or go to the order? Okay, I've got three pieces. One is I'd like to be approved to enter into a lease with the Scotia Glenville School District for storage space in their old bus garage.
A dollar seems like an awful lot.
Yep. So, Andrew had contacted them. We have the building that we use up in Court Park, and it seems like for the foreseeable future, we'll still have that. But who knows? It's privately owned, they could change their mind at any time. We had the vacancy at the bus garage. It's a perfect place to put our plows and some of the bigger things when we're not using them. So, for the price of a dollar, the district has allowed, agreed to allow us to at least have space. So, I'd like to be authorized to enter that lease.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion for a second.
Any discussion on that? All payers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we have a resolution in front of us regarding the foil appeal. Another resolution is that it's resolved that the Board of Trustees upholds the fired responses and finds that the request for interviews, notes, interview notes is denied as it would constitute an unwarranted invasion of personal privacy under the New York State Public Conference's law and that all of the records other than those documents previously provided are records that the Village of Scotia does not possess. So, depending on how you want here for the explanation of what's going on, so you can do what you want, but anybody care to move that? Actually, I'm going to move the resolution. Anybody care to second it?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
So, I went to look at the surrogates' records for the mother. And it was a lot of interesting stuff. I think the guy's got a point. I don't, I still don't think he needs to look at the police records, but...
Yeah, that's our position, it's a civil, it's a civil matter.
I tried to talk to his attorney and his attorney wouldn't call me back, so I'm happy to look for him.
So, I think we'll call the roll on this just for...
Trusty Matthews.
Trusty.
Trusty Gifford.
Yes.
Trusty Tiberio.
Yes.
Trusty Rizzo.
Yes. And then my last piece of new business is that, you know, we have this floating meeting the third Monday of the month, I'd like to schedule that.
SCC.
What's that?
SCC agreement.
Oh, sorry. Did they receive that?
Sent it.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, this was dated for yesterday. The professor from SCC came in with all the paperwork for the archeological dig at the Flynn House. So, she's pretty excited. She wanted special permission to see who's going to be at the Flynn House and I said, why not? And I love people down there watching. So, Lydia has reviewed the agreement with, between SCC and the village, could I be authorized to enter into that agreement?
Yes, I'd like to.
Okay. All payers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then finally, I would like to schedule that Monday meeting. The two topics I'd like to do is Eric Buskirk, the chair of our planning board, has a presentation for us on electric vehicle charging stations that we're proposing. And he's bringing with him, it's a resident of Glenville who has children that attend Scotia Glenville schools, that has one of these electric cars, is really into it, so he wants to show us how the app works, that if you're a driver and you can see, oh, here's the restaurants in Scotia and all that. So, so, but to Eric.
Yeah.
My game, one bit?
Six.
Yep. And then after that, I'd like to discuss our facilities.
So, Chris, we're sort of along the line of the car charging things, is that, you know, they've had those green bikes in the city. I wrote a letter to the people asking if they could extend that into Scotia. I haven't really gotten an answer yet. They said they didn't want to involve any other communities and I said, well, Scotia is an extension of the Schenectady bus system, we might as well be an extension of their bike system too.
Yep.
And so, anyway, that seems like it would be a, same sort of benefit like...
Yeah, and I don't know where you had thought, because I was going to wait, because we're putting the bike tracks in here. I was, I, in my mind, I thought, I'm not a bicycle, so you probably have a better view than me, but I thought it'd be great to put them down by the boat docks.
Yeah.
Because we have a commitment to pave the bike trail this, this spring. So, if the bikes are there, residents could get a bike and take a bike trail, voters could get a bike and through the village, I think it'd be a great place.
Well, I think it was a woman's email, you might be able to back it up.
Okay. Anything else, really go to the order. Entertaining a motion to adjourn. So, thank you.